And we're live Chair.
Thank you very much Andrea. You know what I did not do, let me just pull this up. My apologies. Welcome everybody. Tonight is November the 17th. It is six o'clock in the evening and uh, this is a regular video meeting of the Mercer Island Planning Commission. As I mentioned, it's 6:01 in the PM. This meeting is now in session. My name is Daniel Hubbell and I'm the Planning Commission Chair. Tonight's virtual meeting is being brought to you using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. The video of this meeting is being broadcast live and will also be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel. Deputy CPD Director Allison Van Gorp and other staff members will be participating in tonight's meeting also remotely. Public audience members maybe listening to the meeting by telephone or using Zoom. Welcome to all of you and thank you for joining us tonight. As we call the role commissioners, if you could please have your microphones turned on and we will have our City Clerk Andrea Larson conduct the roll call. Andrea.
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Boatsman.
President.
Commissioner Friedman is absent. Commissioner Goodman. Here. Chair Hubbell.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Rashish.
Here.
And Vice Chair Weinberg.
Present.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. As I mentioned, for this meeting, we'll continue to utilize Zoom and as before, I will do my best to recognize you. When your hands are raised either virtually or physically, depending on how much you're trying to get my attention. I will try to recognize you in order and when we get to that portion of the agenda. We will now move to the appearances portion of our agenda where individuals wishing to speak during our meeting may do so by either telephone or Zoom. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission on any item. All remarks should be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to individual commission members or staff members. If any person makes personal, impertinent or slanderous remarks or becomes boisterous, threatening or personally abusive while addressing the commission, I may request that that person leave the meeting. When it is your turn to address the commission, please be sure to speak audibly and state your name for the record and comments will be limited to three minutes. Andrea, do we have anyone this evening wishing to address the commission?
Thank you Chair. There was no one who signed up to speak this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Since there are no appearances this evening, we'll move on to the next agenda item. In regular business, which will be approval and review of the minutes from October 27th and November 3rd. If I could start, I will take these individually, if you don't mind. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October the 27th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Rashish and seconded by, I believe that was Commissioner Murphy. Are there any updates, corrections or changes that anyone would like to note? Okay, hearing none. Andrea, if we could take a quick vote.
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Goodman.
Hi.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Hi.
Commissioner Rashish.
Hi.
Vice Chair Weinberg.
Hi.
Chair Hubbell.
I.
And Commissioner Murphy.
Hi.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. And moving on, is there a motion to approve the minutes from November the 3rd?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Rashish and seconded by Vice Chair Weinberg. Are there any corrections, comments or changes? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the number November 3rd. Andrea, if you could call a vote. Sorry, I'm getting tongue tied. I'm looking at three things at once.
Commissioner Rashish.
I'm.
Commissioner Hubbell or Chair Hubbell.
I.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Hi.
Commissioner Goodman.
abstaining.
Vice Chair Weinberg.
I.
And Commissioner Murphy.
I.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. The minutes pass 5:01. With Commissioner Goodman abstaining. Thank you. That concludes our first item. We will now move to the next item of regular business, which is ZTR 21-005 related to noise and lighting, which is an item that was docketed last year by the Planning Commission ratified by the City Council and I believe proposed by Commissioner Boatsman. And it looks like Allison is going to take us through the conversation here. The goal this evening, I believe, is to provide direction to Allison and the staff so that they can come back with some potential proposed code amendments. And so no action is anticipated this evening. Awesome.
Thank you Chair. Before I get started, I wanted to take a minute to introduce our new senior planner that started this week. Adam Zach is joining us from, he was previously a planner up in San Juan County and has now moved down to Seattle and is joining the team. So Adam's going to be working with me. We'll be kind of partnering up to do all of the comprehensive plan and code amendment work and you'll definitely be seeing more of him here at the Planning Commission.
Welcome Adam.
Thank you. Yeah, I look forward to it. Yeah.
From, from one group of islands to another.
All right. Just give me a minute. I'm going to share my screen. I have a really short presentation tonight. Pretty closely modeled after the agenda bill. I just wanted to, not the agenda bill, the staff memo. I just wanted to walk you all through the information quickly and then really tonight is just meant to be a discussion. I'd, I'd love to get your input and feedback on where you would like to go with any potential code amendments and then we'll get to work on those. The plan is to bring this back early next year for the public hearing and further discussion or recommendation. So yeah, I pretty much covered that first slide. We're going to be coming back later on. Just didn't want to do any public hearings right here at the end of the year during the holidays. It didn't seem like good timing. So we'll hold off on that until January or February. So the original request that was made on the docket was kind of two separate items. The first one being limiting commercial landscaping operations using power tools to the same hours as the, the construction work hours. And then the second item is relating to residential spotlighting and requiring that lighting to be directed towards the owner's property. So I'm going to take these one at a time because they do have a little bit. They're handled a little bit differently in the code currently and it may make sense to have different approaches on each of them. So first for noise, I wanted to highlight this section that's in the nuisance code currently. As was kind of hinted at in the docket request, we currently have this subsection Q2 here that talks about the hours for work that's authorized by a permit. We refer to these usually as the construction work hours. And it's seven to seven on Mondays through Fridays and nine to six on Saturdays. No work is allowed on Sundays or legal holidays. Also of note, and I tend to forget about this provision, but there's this other piece down here that I've highlighted. So for any other noise that's not related to a permit, there's also hours. They're a bit broader. So it's seven to eight on Mondays through Fridays and nine to eight on Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. So these hours here would apply to any of the activities listed above here that don't require development permits. So I also highlighted this section II because it refers to maintenance, repair, clearing and landscaping. And it seemed to me that at least some of the things that were referred to in the stack request in terms of landscaping noise from power tools might fall into this definition already. And, and even if not, this might be a place to make some minor amendments to further clarify or, or add on the types of uses here that we were hoping to regulate. I see that Commissioner Rashish sets his hand up.
Yeah.
I had two clarifying questions. So in section one, the way I'm reading it and the way I'm understanding it, the code does not differentiate between whether the source of noise comes from a commercial operation or the homeowner doing the work themselves. Am I reading that properly?
That's correct. I think the only differentiation is if it's permitted or not. And so, you know, permitted work often is done by contractors or, or other professionals, but not all the time.
And then in section three, where it doesn't allow this work to happen on Sundays. What about a private homeowner who wants to mow their lawn on a Sunday?
Yeah, I think that would fall under this part down here where they, they are allowed during certain hours, eight to eight. Okay. I think, I think that's probably, you know, if we consider lawn mowing to be part of landscaping and I think it would fall in those.
Got it. Got it. I got two B and three confused. So thank you.
All right. I think I had one more slide here on noise. So just kind of taking on to this docket request. As I was talking with our staff team, there's been a few, like I'd say a handful of code compliance cases over the last couple of years related to, you know, not quite this issue, but something closely related. And it has to do with noise from mechanical equipment. So when people put things like generators, air conditioners, ventilation systems that are sometimes related to water heaters or other things like that, especially in the side yard. They create a lot of noise that can be very annoying to their next door neighbor. Sometimes, you know, in the little side setback between the two houses, which can be fairly narrow, you know, 10 to 15 feet in a lot of cases. If there's a noisy piece of equipment operating there, the sound can kind of reverberate between the houses and we haven't had tons and tons of complaints on this issue, but we have had several. And, you know, the people are generally extremely upset about it. It's, it's really bothering them. And unfortunately, we don't have very clear or strong code language related to this issue. And so it's been very difficult to manage from a code compliance perspective. So we just wanted to put this in here as another suggestion for something to consider if this code section is amended. I think further considerations on this type of noise would be, and it's kind of different from landscaping in that, you know, these systems usually need to operate around the clock. You know, people need heat, they need power all the time. And there's also emergency use for, for generators in particular, in particular. There may be an exemption in the state code. The language is a little gray, but it, it may apply to emergency use of generators. However, the issue that has also come up with generators is that they often need to be operated on a maintenance cycle. So once every two weeks or once a month, it needs to kick on and run for 15 or 20 minutes. And, and this can also be fairly noisy. So that's what I had prepared related to noise issue. And I just want to pause there. I see we've got at least one hand up and, and just maybe want to start the discussion on this issue and then move to lighting. Once we finish this up.
Okay, Carolyn.
Yeah, Allison, given that the sound provisions of our nuisance code don't actually specify how loud something can be, you know, during a particular period. Um, is that regulated by the state regulations then?
There is a state regulation that would apply and it's going off my memory, I believe during the daytime limits noise to 45 decibels and then at night it's 55. I will say that this is another one that's extremely difficult to enforce. There's a lot of ambient noise in Mercer Island, like from freeway and things like that, cars driving around, which is often close to those levels, that threshold of 45 or 55 decibels. And so if you bring a noise meter out and you look at the little needle moving around, you know, even without any particularly loud noise from a piece of, you know, power tool or machinery or whatever, you're going to see that needle up in the range of 40 to 50 from time to time, just from other, other sounds that are going on out there. And so it's really difficult to differentiate and regulate the impact of some of these things. You know, typically we need to measure from the property line. So you're not necessarily super close to the thing that's generating the sound and then it's intermingling with other sounds as cars drive by and things like that. So I'll just say in general, using decibel limits has been difficult.
Is it typical that the cities in this area also don't have decibel limits like we don't? Or is that unusual?
I actually don't know. I know that Seattle does, but I don't know how some of the other suburban cities in the east side are managing this right now. That's definitely something we could look into further.
Okay, thank you.
Victor.
Just a quick question. I, I think I'm going to gather based on your, on your previous answer, the city does have the equipment to be able to measure decibel levels. Is that right?
Um, I, I believe we have some kind of a decibel meter. I don't know what kind of quality or, or how, you know, how effective of a tool it is. I know our code compliance officer several years ago used it sometimes and our more recent code compliance officer did not like it and didn't think it was very, very effective or, you know, accurate. So perhaps there's room to improve there. I don't, I don't know much about the science behind measuring noise.
Got it. Okay. But we, it sounds like we have something and the accuracy is debatable.
Exactly.
Allison, for the purposes of this discussion, I know we also have the lighting. Did you, I, I got the sense, I thought, did you want us to sort of have some discussion and give guidance on this before we move to lighting? Or do you want to do your presentation on lighting and then come?
I think it might make sense to take them separately. So we can just keep talking about noise now and then I'll move on to lighting.
Okay. So why don't I propose this? Carolyn, I know this came out of your proposed docket amendment from last year. Do you maybe want to kick us off and talk about what some of the concerns were that led to this? And then maybe we can go one by one and get some feedback and then see where the conversation goes as far as just providing direction to Allison.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I was, you know, bothered by the loud blowers. They're probably gas blowers, like hundreds and hundreds of Mercer Islanders are. And I just wanted to try to open the door on a conversation as to doing something, starting someplace. And we had been successful in changing the hours in which construction work could be done. And I thought, well, maybe there's an angle there. Personally, I've spent quite a bit of time here today studying the nuisance code, the sound provisions. I can't quite figure out a code amendment that really does it. Because if you try to say, you know, for example, noise generated by somebody with a business license, that's not going to work because essentially the way our code works is that you can't do the activity during the hours in which it's prohibited. And, you know, that's a lot of business licenses. So that doesn't, I don't think that works. But I would just add that hundreds of cities in the US do take an approach to regulating blowers and sometimes other tools. Some ban gas blowers always or at certain times of the year. Some ban gas blowers at a certain decibel range or they restrict the time of day that gas blowers can be used. But for a local example, Seattle has a regulation that it's illegal to use any leaf blower of any kind that's greater than 65 decibels. And I don't know how they measure that. It sounds like they're measuring the actual tool. They also limit the use to eight to 6pm, which is not a huge, that's, you know, not a there's not much restriction there. That's just, that's what they do. It's also a major pollution problem. You would do a lot better blowing your leaves with an F-150 than you do with a little backpack blower. The two strokes are the worst. They're the dirtiest and loudest. And then the last thing I will offer is that there was a remarkable conversation on Nextdoor in July. It was amazing to see people coming out of the woodwork that you never see on Nextdoor. Scores of people just up in arms over blower noise. I, I do think there's considerable interest on Mercer Island about doing something about this noise. I did ask Allison to send you, I sort of just copied everything I saw in Nextdoor. Don't know that I did it correctly, but you can kind of see some of the comments that people have and there's a lot of links there showing what cities have done around the country in regards to this. So I, I think there, there probably is a desire on Mercer Island to take some sort of steps on this problem. I don't quite know, you know, what the approach is. I don't have a specific suggestion for amending the code. But there could be a recommendation to the council to take action in some other way. That's another option.
Is that all you had, Carolyn?
Yeah.
Great. A quick question for you. So just given the context you just gave, it sounds like and, and I saw the mail that Allison forwarded. So thank you for, for providing that for us to go back and look at. Having not read all of those yet, did it seem to be, I mean, noise is a pretty broad subject clearly. Was, was leaf blowers the sort of central conversation to all of those threads? Which is sort of in alignment with what I'm gathering was your primary concern in bringing this up?
Yeah, most, most of it's about leaf blowers. There are some cities that take a broader approach. So yeah, I, I tried to use, you know, a broader term just to see if, if that would work, but and if it did work, I mean, that, that it could be just extended to power tools. So I guess what I would suggest is if we're talking about this, we probably should keep it broad. That was the intention. Power tools, but to see if there's a way we could, could amend the code to address this. So, but yes, most of which I sent you is about blowers. I do a suggestion for Allison's staff comment about generators HVAC and vent issues. When I looked at the code, it looked to me like if you inserted the word operation in Q1B little sub I that that might include things like HVAC vents generators because they have to do with let's see. Okay, operating a building or structure. Just an idea. Construction comma operations comma or repair of any building or structure. Okay, that's all I had Dan.
Great. Thank you Carolyn.
Sure.
So what I, well, maybe I'll just go a person by person and get you know, some thoughts and perspective. One of the questions that I'll, I'll submit to the group that I would love an opinion on is a sort of define, I'll call it defining the problem, but really is probably better summarized as what would the scope be of any changes? Clearly there are wholesale revision of the noise ordinance may in fact be warranted. Or we may want to consider just something more tightly aligned to customer comment and feedback around leaf blowers and yard tools. So as a question, maybe if you could provide insight as to where you would be interested in, in pursuing this. If we think that there's a broader problem, then maybe we look at the whole thing. And if not, maybe we can just look at addressing some of these other smaller things. So why don't I start? Commissioner Goodman, would you be willing to start for us today?
Sure. So yeah, thanks. I, I don't have a lot of in-depth comment. I've kind of been listening to what's been said, and I did get a chance to review that email that Carolyn forwarded from Nextdoor. I guess what I'd probably say is I think something reasonable based on kind of feedback the city's been getting in terms of complaints would be fine. I, I don't know if an adjustment to hours makes sense. If, if we did need to do an adjustment, I'd probably say keep that fairly narrowly scoped. I thought the idea of maybe limiting or banning the gas leaf blowers might be something worth exploring to see how, you know, how that would impact landscapers. I didn't previously know it was such a big environmental hazard. So I think it's, it's worth kind of understanding if that's something we could pursue at this time. I, I know personally, we have an electric leaf blower and it's fine. And then in terms of the HVAC question, I, I understand Allison where you're going. I don't know what the solution is because I do know they kind of have to run around the clock. So if you, if you had a solution that seemed reasonable, sure, I think it'd be worth looking at that.
Okay.
I think, I think that's about it actually. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Rashish.
Darn it. You called on me. I'm I'm also, I, I'm kind of similar to Commissioner Goodman. I'm struggling a little bit with what the scope is here. Whether it's just whether it's just a change in the hours or, or whether it's specifically targeting leaf blowers. I'm, I'm I'm, I'm a little bit unclear as to kind of what we're how we're defining the problem, which I realize is what you're asking me, but I'm, I guess my answer back to you is I'm, I'm struggling with it a little bit. It, it sounds like we call out landscaping and you know, I think there's an opportunity there to maybe play with the hours a little bit. But yeah, that's where I'm at. And then, and then I guess a question and, and maybe a response to what Commissioner Boatsman proposed in terms of HVAC systems. Is, is the word maintenance synonymous with operations? Do we need the additional operations word? I don't know. Anyway, that's where I'm at.
Okay, Commissioner Murphy.
I would think that the scope should be fairly limited and specific. I think the general view of people, and I haven't had a chance to look at the material that Carolyn circulated, but I think I may have seen that thread on Nextdoor. But I didn't comb through it and read all the citations. But I think the consensus is that gas powered leaf blowers are a pain in the rear or a pain in the ear as the case may be. And and I, I'd be in favor of looking at something pretty targeted. I also think that Allison's suggestion about looking at subsection three to clarify issues relating to HVAC and generators, other emergency equipment would be appropriate. And as far as the hours, you know, I don't know if it's, if it makes sense to tinker with the hours, but one thing that I would look at is the issue of Sunday work. Because the purpose of Sunday work is to avoid the noise. But if the Sunday work is interior work, that's not generating any noise at the, you know, the property line or outside the building. I've always thought that that was kind of a silly rule. It's like a blue law. And, you know, and really kind of silly. Um, and you know, and really kind of silly. Um, if, if it's directed to noise, then deal with the noise. But um, having it be directed to work. Uh, to not allow any work on Sunday really doesn't. Doesn't make any sense. If you're trying to avoid noise, then tackle the noise issue. So those are three things that I look at.
To that, uh, Commissioner Murphy, uh, I think that's a good call out. I, I just wanted to make note of. Item one A that's on the screen here. This came up, has come up previously, I think during our. Uh, during some other review, it may have even been in, in a, a. Previous board that I've been on, but um, the very thing that you mentioned, if you were doing work inside the house, as long as the noise that was being generated couldn't be heard. Off property, it, it basically didn't fall under these regulations.
Right.
That was, that was my.
There's another code section, I believe, that prohibits work on Sunday.
Ah. So that's outside of the noise, uh.
Correct.
That may have been, yeah. The, I think you're, now that you say that, I think you're correct, Allison. We might want to look the. I, but I think that was in the building code, right?
I think for, yeah, permitted construction work, there is something in the building code, I believe. I'm happy to look at that.
Yeah.
But I think we do tend, in terms of how we enforce that sort of operationally within the city. We do tend to tell developer builders, you know, this applies to the permitted construction work. Um, things inside, like if you're painting or laying tile, or you're just getting supplies delivered or something like that is okay.
I, I don't know if they believe that's the rule. Speaking for, from, as someone who, you know, finished a house two years ago.
Yeah, and it's always kind of complicated.
Right.
Because the neighbors don't know that either, and so then they call and report them if any truck pulls up or something, and. It's not, it's not an easy one to enforce either.
Yeah. So it might, it might be worth looking at that just to. Cause, cause those two things work together and you're trying to solve a particular problem. Um. And want to focus on the problem, not the. Something else.
Yeah. Great, Vice Chair Weinberg.
So the question that you had asked was, should uh the, if we're defining the problem, should we define it as a wholesale change to the noise ordinance? Or is this about uh leaf blowers and yard tools? And. My thought to that is it should be an and instead of an or between the two. And I want to offer an anecdote that uh we might not have thought of regarding uh leaf blowers. Uh, leaf blowers are usually most active in October when the leaves have come down. Um, that also happens to be the weeks before our elections. And candidates uh are encouraged to walk door to door and talk to. Uh, our uh residents uh during uh it, the months and weeks leading up to elections. There were times during October when I had to skip whole sections of neighborhoods because the noise was too loud, and I literally could not hear the person standing. Covid distance away from me at their own doorstep because of all the leaf blower noise that was going on. Um, so I, I think that uh the leaf blowers are not just affecting quality of life, they're affecting the quality of our civil civic discourse on the island. I saw the experiences that firsthand uh many days in October. Uh, so I, I, I feel pretty strongly that we should uh, uh, find a way to uh limit the. Uh, use of uh leaf blowers, either ban them entirely, as has been done in Washington DC. Um, or to ban the gas-powered leaf blowers uh so that if there are a technology that can do it quietly, that it can still be done.
Okay. Um. I will, uh, so I've taken a couple of notes. Uh, it sounds like we're. Um. Well, let me ask you this question, Ted. You, you said sort of. And, and, and I would say that looking at the entirety of the noise code would include potentially looking at restrictions on. Um. Uh, on things like blowers, are you uh through what you mentioned, are you in, in favor of us as a board looking at this? More broadly of, you know, everything from hours to just specifically. With maybe some additional restrictions around leaf blowers? Or are you saying that really leaf blowers are the problem and we should just narrow the focus to just sort of addressing that?
I, I was implying, you're suggesting that it'd be, it'd be both, that we should be looking at the hours of use. Um, for tools as a whole. Um, and we should also be looking at leaf blowers specifically and saying these two-stroke gas engines have got to go.
Got it. Great. Uh, I saw Commissioner Murphy's hand and then Commissioner Rishi.
Uh, just one uh more point, the, the guys that do my landscaping, um. I've talked to them about this and they are in the process of transitioning to electronic. Um, you know, battery pa- uh powered leaf blowers. Now, so um, the point being that this is, we're not asking them to do something that is not. Possible uh if we're to regulate in this area a little bit more aggressively.
Okay. Victor.
Um, I, I think it was Commissioner Goodman that asked, but I, I would also second the request. To just, aside from the Nextdoor data, I would love to see some quantitative data on. Complaints from the city or uh to the city regarding noise around leaf blowers and all of that. And I think, you know, when we have the, the next time we chat about this. If we could just have some quantitative data on. What, what those complaints look like, that would be great.
I'm happy to check on that. I, I don't know. That will have good information. I, I, I think this might be an area where if someone calls to complain about it, we would probably say we don't. Really regulate it, you know, we have hours, but beyond that. There's, there's not any regulation against using a leaf blower. So I'm not sure that formal complaints would get filed on this issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um, that actually led to, so in my notes here, um. Oh, a- and, and I don't necessarily expect an answer, although um Allison, you can opine if, if you do have direction, but. And I think you may have just answered it, but uh enforcement. Um, how is that managed? I know we have a code officer during business hours during the week, but. How is that handled after hours and weekends? Um, you know, as you mentioned, this is kind of a twenty-four hour, the, the hours at which people would likely complain for being someone being out of compliance. I'm guessing we probably don't have people. Actively working at those.
Well, we encourage folks to call the police about those issues, actually. So we, we partner with the police on noise enforcement. Um, because often it does happen after, after hours for our city hall staff. Um, you know, whether it's a noisy party or construction noise on a weekend morning, um, the police are typically who respond to that. And, you know, we've helped educate them on these regulations of the nuisance code so that they understand what isn't, what is not allowed. Although, like, when it's related to the construction issues, I think it's difficult for the police to deal with it because it's hard for them to know what's permitted and what's not permitted and. You know, what's okay and what's not okay. It's, there's more gray areas, but um. Related to noise from other things like parties or things like that, the police are well-equipped to deal with that. And they, they frequently do.
Cool, um, a couple of other uh thoughts from my side, you know, I, it strikes me, you mentioned the question around um. Sort of what's allowed in what I'll call for emergency use, and so, you know, you gave the example of. You know, generators and other things that might be used during a power outage. Uh, we had a, a neighbor who had a tree fall. Uh, during a windstorm and they were out at, you know, eleven o'clock at night trying to uh buck up some wood with a chainsaw. Um, in order to, to remove a hazard from the, the driveway, uh, things like that. So i- i- if it's not in there, I think it does warrant some. Conversation around what are the provisions for uh emergency allowances? I mean, I, I think any police officer is going to use their judgment. Uh, in, in those cases, but it would be good to at least have some statutory baseline there. Um. I was thinking about hours and, and specifically about generators, and it got me thinking about. Um, my summer and camping, and what I find ironic about our. Um, hours and people saying that they're not restrictive enough. If you think about going camping, and I don't know if there are any frequent campers here, but when you go to a campground. Quiet hours start at ten PM. Uh, and uh you would like to think that being outdoors and being in that environment does actually. Uh, people want to be out there for the peace and solitude. Um, although most people have to rely on, on, you know, generators and the sort in order to, to have. Uh, things. And then I, I also brought up. This is in line with emergency use, but health and safety, for example, um. You know, we do have a number of elderly people. I think somebody mentioned heat and uh, you know, refrigeration for medicines and things like that, that. Uh, you know, frankly, we have a generator because uh we have someone in our house that has medicine that's required to be refrigerated, and. We've had extended power outages, and so we've got to run uh those things regularly. So I, I do think that there's. Areas that I think warrant a little bit more, at least discussion and understanding of how we're managing those um things. That being said. Um. I understand that there are people that are frustrated. I have observed as Carolyn has and others, I think that the primary concerns that people have. Uh, I have been twofold, which is contractors working on roofs and siding and being loud with air compressors. It's, it's not just. Leaf blowers, it's air compressors and generators and things. Um, late into the evening, particularly in the summer when it's light until ten or ten thirty at night, and so they're trying to get as much work done as possible. Uh, that's the one I hear a lot, and then of course the leaf blower issue. Um, so. It's a long-winded way of saying I do think that there's more that we could open up, but I would also be in favor of keeping this rather targeted. Um. To uh some of the very specific noise things that maybe aren't. Um. As uh. As well-regulated, like leaf blowers. So those are my thoughts. Allison, do you have, based on everything you've heard here, do you have? Questions for us as a group, or would you like us to dig more into any of the things that you've heard? Um, do you want us to provide more uh? To give you some direction on maybe what you might want a couple of options to propose next time, or?
Yeah, I think, you know, if we could try to see if there's some consensus on which options we want to move forward for further. Analysis and discussion, that'd be helpful. I, I think we've got kind of a, a both and idea out there, but I'm not sure if everyone is in agreement that we want to look at. Both regulating or eliminating gas leaf blowers, and we want to look at the hours of work that are allowed. Um, and there's been a couple suggestions for other, other changes as well, so. It, I, I maybe sort of a thumbs up on which ideas we want to move forward would be helpful.
So I think you labeled the three that I wrote down in my notes of general buckets uh that I heard from everybody. There was hours. Um, leaf blowers and then emergency uses, um, which a couple of other people also mentioned. Are there any? Specific things beyond that that folks would like to have Allison bring some options for Carolyn? Uh, you're still on mute, Carolyn.
Um. Could you repeat what you just said, Dan? I was busy checking my notes.
Oh, no worries. Uh, the three general. I think areas that I heard in the comments. Uh, and as my boss always says, let me get this wrong so we can get it right together. Uh, is hours and just reviewing whether or not the hours and sort of the division of. Um, I, I'm going to lump into that conversation, the division of permitted and un- un- unpermitted work. Um, leaf blowers was the second category, and then third being emergency uses or provisos that go. Uh, for reasons that would be allowed outside of the standard hours. So those are the three categories that I heard from all the comments.
And would those categories be directed towards just the docket item, or is that also meant to summarize the? Item that staff brought up regarding generators HVAC and venting?
Um, I, 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 I mean, I would make the, the, the case that that could probably fall in the. Well, uh, that's a question to the group. I don't know. I.
I would add, I suppose I would add that to your list because um I, I agree that it's something that. Should be looked at and hopefully a solution can be found, um, according to what the staff brought up.
Okay. Uh, I, I am fine with that. Are there any? Given those four items, are there any? Folks that believe that that's either too much or too little for us to have the staff go and. Put together some proposals based on the context that we've provided?
Um.
Commissioner Murphy has a thumbs up. Victor, you have your hand up?
And the, on the, on the last one, the, let's, let's call it the HVAC provisions. Just curious, and, and maybe this is a question for Allison. I, I realize part of this discussion is for you to go off and think about this. Can you just give you an idea of, of the direction that you would go with? With the HVAC stuff, and I, I forget what else was on there, but let's just lump it all together.
It's fine to lump it. It's mainly, mainly HVAC. Um. You know, there's a couple different directions we could go, and I'm not, I don't have an opinion yet on which one's better. I want to talk some more with our building official and inspectors. Um, you know, there are regulations in the building code and land use code around where these kind of systems can be. Put when the, when they're added or when the building's constructed. Um, they are allowed inside yards under some, you know, cir- certain provisions. And when they're installed, the installer is supposed to certify that they meet a, a noise. Criteria. However, you know, we do see that sometimes. When those things are followed, there's still a noise problem later on down the line. And so. I don't know if the best route is to change something in the land user building code. Or have another layer of protection with, you know, a provision here in the nuisance code related to how loud they can be when they're operating.
Yeah, s- and, and, and so, and. And again, we're, we're just spitballing this, but. Would that be like a? A requirement for some sort of baffling or some sort of noise suppression or?
It could be, um, that can be effective. Sometimes it. It depends on what system you're trying to. Screen the noise on, you know, some of them need a certain amount of airflow and stuff, so you can't totally enclose them. And if you only enclose them, you know, around the front and the sides, the sound just goes straight out of the top, which doesn't necessarily help.
Right.
Um.
But I, but I would also imagine that. An A, an HVAC system, the same, this, if you take ten HVAC systems, they're going to be loud or not. Depending on. How two houses are configured, right?
Right, and I think the, the unit itself, the equipment can have different noise profiles depending on, I mean. Primarily how expensive it, it is. More expensive systems can be quieter.
Okay. Right.
And then the case is, since we're lumping those in, um, that conversation, you know, you mentioned, I think, Allison, generators that have to be run. For a, yeah, I, I know I run my generator once a month for ten or so minutes, but I tend to do that in the, you know. Middle of the day, uh, you know, as if I was um doing any other loud noise, but. Um, would, are, are, is. What you're saying now, are hours of noise on this page that you're showing now essentially? That sort of activity isn't being regulated by this because it's not a part of any building or development?
Yeah, it doesn't really fall into one of these criteria here. Like operating a generator doesn't quite fit in any of these categories, so it's not currently regulated by these provisions. I mean, I think typically people are running the maintenance cycles, you know, at 11:00 AM on a Tuesday or something and they're doing it at a time that's not going to be too intrusive. And yet, you know, people still complain about it. So I, you know, I don't know what the right answer is there. Maybe some of these are just sounds that people need to deal with, as long as they're within certain hours. Or not. I mean, I'm not sure what the right answer is.
Okay, I see Carolyn's hand. I want to ask one quick follow-up question to that, which is this code is strictly residential, not commercial like in the town center. So when we talk about HVAC systems, we're talking about home air pumps and air conditioning and backup generators and those sorts of things, not something that like you would find at the town center or maybe some of the other. Because we do know that we have neighborhoods that are adjacent to some of those businesses. So
Yeah, it may be worth differentiating that. I don't know. I hadn't thought through it that far. I think this code would apply anywhere in the island. So you know, it's worth thinking through what makes sense in, in different neighborhoods, whether it's town center or other places.
Yeah, we may just want to get clarity on what it does cover, just so that we're clear. Sorry, Carolyn, go ahead.
Oh, no problem. I had earlier offered that perhaps in sub I there adding the word operation, you know, might extend to the sorts of things that staff brought up, but if not, another option could just be to add a little Roman numeral five to that list that describes these types of, of noises that are perhaps needing attention. Might be a little bit difficult to describe them, but that might be a way to do it.
Okay. Commissioner Murphy?
Two things, I, I would be concerned about Carolyn's last suggestion, because then that would clearly make your example, Dan, of the standby generator would clearly be subject to this. And, and that would be okay if you put an exception you know, in a new sex subsection or, you know, caveat to subsection three for those type of things.
For emergency uses.
Yeah, and you know, because then you, otherwise you, you've now swept in someone's emergency generator and the power's up. And you know, they're running a generator to keep warm or to keep medication cold or whatever. And you know, suddenly they're violating the code, which I don't think we want to create.
Yeah.
The other point.
Sorry.
Sorry. The other point that I think Victor raised was you know, he asked Allison, where might you deal with the sort of the emergency HVAC type of thing? And my impression from the memo was that that would be something that would either be a caveat or exception under three. Or, you know, maybe a standalone provision about emergency use and other types of equipment. So that was, that was my other thought to, to add there.
Okay. Carolyn?
Yeah, Mike makes a, a good point. As soon as we put the HVAC venting thing under B, it then becomes subject to hours. And if those things have to run 24 hours, I guess that's not going to work. So.
Yeah. So Allison, here's, here's what I heard, I think to summarize from before, I think there's appetite to just discuss the appropriateness of the current hours and maybe the distinction between the permitted and unpermitted. I think digging a little bit into leaf blowers and maybe how we might treat those differently. More specifically, whether that's, you know, further restricting the hours or, or the types or of uses, whatever. We'll leave it to the staff to come up with a recommendation there. I think as we've just discussed in the last two, I think they're combined. There's the operations of HVAC equipment. I think there's two classify, sorry. What are HVAC and generators and sort of larger operational equipment? And I think there's two cycles to that. There's the everyday use of things like heat pumps and air conditioners, and then there's emergency use. And when that's warranted and it, it sounds like it may warrant having some sort of subsection here that at least addresses a definition of emergency use and what that means and what's covered under that. So those are the four things that I've heard. Vice Chair Weinberg?
Yeah. So one thought that comes to mind about HVAC. As the heat dome of 2021 becomes the norm and not the exception in our summers. Having the ability to cool the air inside our houses is going to become a safety factor and a survival thing more than it is a comfort thing. And I think for new construction or significant remodels, it makes sense to say, hey, you've got to be able to cool your space without making a lot of noise. For older buildings on the island that were not designed with air conditioning, we're probably going to face situations before they get remodeled where they have to have some kind of air conditioning added. And I don't think that we can call that really an emergency. I think that's something that's going to become normal during our summers. So we might want to consider having the, if the, the language that we construct around HVAC to be focused on remodels and, and new construction. And either have different language or more lenient language for the retrofits on older properties.
Okay. Allison, did that make sense?
Yeah. I've got it written it down.
Which I, I'm, I'm reading to mean, there may be some elements of this in the noise. Nuisance codes and, and potentially looking at what the building codes do to address some of this as well. That was my inference. Carolyn? Sorry, you're on mute again.
I would like to offer that in regards to the list that you, you're preparing and the comment about leaf blowers. You know, I, I think the problem is the noise of leaf blowers and it might be that you know, working with the hours may not be the way to go about it. I guess I would ask staff to bring us some options to deal with the noise of whether that be banning them or, you know, working with hours, maybe some options that are broader than, than just the hours.
Yeah, I, I agree. The limiting the hours is not going to do anything about leaf blowers. People don't blow leaves at night. So I, I think we can, the hours are more about addressing the at night and for leaf blowers, we kind of need a standalone thing for that, I think.
Okay. Allison, given all this, do you have any other questions? Bless you. Take your time.
Um, I think I've gotten everything. I'm losing my voice now. I think I've gotten everything down as far as the feedback that we've had so far.
Okay. Do, Allison, do we, do you need to take a five or 10 minute break?
Five minute break and then I'll be good.
Yeah, I was just going to say, why, why don't we take a five minute break? It sounds like we've got everything we need around noise. We'll allow you a few minutes to go and regroup with your cold that you're nursing right now. And so why don't we come back? It is now seven o'clock. Let's come back at 7:10 and we'll rejoin to go over the lighting conversation.
Did you change your shirt Ted or is it a jacket you put on?
Like a blanket.
It is. It is a what is called an honor blanket. It was by the oh gosh, what is it? The some call me tribe for volunteering their vaccination clinic. And I love the blanket. It's very warm. Unfortunately, my cats love to do this on it, which wrecks it in a hurry. So I keep it under undercover and bring it out when I can protect it.
Your, your, your tiny little, you know, window on my screen looked like you had put on an Ascot and I was like, that's a, that's a new trend.
I've got my na na as well.
There you go.
Allison, are you doing better now?
I hope so. I think so.
All right. We'll just wait for Commissioner Murphy and it's like Victor's there. But we'll give Mike one more second. I got a brand new pair of glasses today and I'm still having still getting used to my focus is just slightly different. So.
We're rolling a little bit.
I'm still kind of like, wait, what am I looking at? Um, all right. It looks like everybody is here. Allison, do you want to walk us through your comments on light?
Yeah, let me just reshare the screen here. Alrighty, um, this is going to be very short. I just have this one slide. I pasted this example that some mammoth adopted a few years ago. It apparently they had the exact same concern come up there and they ended up adopting this provision into their, their lighting provisions and it specifically addresses flood lighting and it also was really similar. I included it in the memo. There's like a model lighting code from the International Dark Skies Association people. And this seems to have been built with, with some influence from that. I, I'm guessing because they're very similar. So I thought this might be a good place to start in terms of thinking about what a lighting provision that addresses spotlighting might, might look like for Mercer Island. And I'm not suggesting we just copy this whole cloth, but just in terms of considering what something might like this might look like. And then, you know, we can, we can edit from here. So I just wanted to toss that out as an example and, and see if this addresses the concerns that Commissioner Boatsman initially had, or, or if there's other issues that the commission might see that we should also address. Oops, you're muted Chair Hubbell.
Of course I am. Carolyn, since you brought this up, did you beyond, I know when you brought this up a year ago, you did talk about spotlighting. Sort of going beyond properties. Were there any other concerns that you were hoping we could address as a part of this discussion or?
Well, I'd like to, um, you know, just do like what I did for the previous issue and just tell you sort of where it's coming from and how the information that's been presented is useful.
Yeah.
Right?
Of course.
Okay. So, um, first I have a clarifying question from Allison. What exactly is security lighting? Because I couldn't find a definition of that at the International Dark Sky Association.
Yeah, I think that was a unique term to this mammoth code. And I, I was assuming it was the kind of lights that have a motion sensor and they turn on if someone walks, you know, up towards the house.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, you know, looking again at the docket item that I put in last year and thinking, who was that person who was so, uh, you know, lack of knowledge to phrase it that way? But in any case, now I'm enlightened because I've been reading what Allison's been sending us. You know, I use the word spotlight. Now I have found out that a spotlight is a very, it, it by definition only lights a very small defined area. So I really didn't use the right terms, but let me tell you what it was I was getting at. Very bright light that shines into your eyes as you walk or drive by a residence. Lights that flip on as you walk or drive by and shine into your eyes. So the problem is the direction of the light, the brightness of the light. Uh, those are the main things right there. I think that the Sammamish outdoor ordinance, outdoor lighting ordinance deals with both the direction and the brightness. And addresses motion sensors, I believe, right? Yeah, okay. And addresses, addresses motion sensors. To my way of thinking, the hold on a second here, check my notes. Okay. In addition to the direction and brightness was the total amount of lighting as well. So to my way of thinking, I think that the International Dark Sky Association example that was provided, that covers the issue a little bit more effectively than the Sammamish. The shielding is required, the brightness is regulated, there are reasonable exceptions limited. And so I would leave it there. Both, both offer some really good examples to deal, deal with what I thought the problems were.
Okay. Uh, I'll just sort of go through the rest of the commissioners and just get a sense if you're good with sort of the direction that the staff is going, or if you would like to add anything else to what we'll want to consider next week or in our next meeting related to specific code changes. Vice Chair Weinberg, do you have anything beyond this that you'd like to offer or to, to support what's been presented?
I guess I'm looking at the paragraph Roman numeral I. They're saying lighting fixtures shall be properly aimed and installed in a manner that causes minimal or no light trespass onto adjacent properties. I'm thinking specifically about the boundary between uh, single family residents and a community facility or a business that has a parking lot that needs to remain lit at night. And how this particular sentence would be interpreted in terms of providing guidance to that owner of the parking lot as to how much they need to shield that lighting to make sure it doesn't go into the window of where the baby's trying to sleep next door. And it's a, it's a little vague where it says like, you know, minimal or no light trespass. And does that essentially mean that the, from the filaments to the window of the neighbor, there can't be a direct line between the two, but the light can reflect off of a car window or something like that and go into a neighboring property. I, I'm trying to figure out how we can, we don't have to work out the, the details of the wording here, but I'm trying to figure out how that first sentence can be made a little clearer so that it can be correctly applied in such situations.
Yeah, we can look for examples or other language there. This, this issue has come up before in enforcement cases in Mercer Island and I think the way we've applied a similar provision was a couple of things like the main beam of light that you can see coming out of the fixture should not cross the property line. And then if you're standing on the other side of the property line, you shouldn't be able to see the light bulb that should be covered by shielding. Um, but I'm sure that could be explained more directly and clearly here somehow. We can, we can look at that.
Okay. Commissioner Murphy, any thoughts?
I think what Allison has put together is, is excellent. I think the point of dealing with this in the lighting portion of the code for, for that rather than nuisance is appropriate. The only question I have is, is there a difference in enforcement or penalties if it's in one area of the code or another?
No, um, the code compliance provisions apply to both these code sections in the same way.
Okay.
Commissioner Goodman.
Thanks. Um, I think it's generally good. I probably just recommend calling some mammoth to make sure it's worked well for them. And to see if there's anything they maybe change in terms of the enforcement. And then just more of a technical thing. Here it's for single family residents in townhouses. I don't know if that would I don't know how that would work on Mercer Island because we basically have single family, then we have kind of a multifamily situation, then I think we're getting some townhouses. What I'm sort of trying to figure out is should it be more broadly applied to kind of our condos up on the hill or should it, you know, like where would it be applied is what I'm kind of getting at. And just making sure that we're specific about that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll point out that, um, the town center and areas outside of town center that have more intense development like condos already have lighting regulations. I can't remember if I included those in, I think I included a link to them in the staff report. I haven't looked at the other provisions in detail, but, but there are exterior lighting provisions already for, for those areas.
So, so I guess a follow-up question would be, for example, if you had like Ted mentioned, a community facility, like say you had a church in a residential neighborhood, which is fairly common. Would this apply to those properties or are they regulated some other way?
They would fall under those other regulations that are already existing. And so my intent here was that this would just apply to single family. Because I think I'll, I'll double check this, but I think everything else is already falling under the existing regulations that we have for those zones.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yeah, the, um, Allison, I'm just looking at the agenda item and you do have links to the town center improvements, which is nineteen eleven dot oh nine oh. And then regulated improvements outside of the town center. So multifamily essentially outside of the town center. Uh, which is
Yeah, and it also applies to churches or other facilities like that.
Yeah, which is nineteen twelve dot oh seven oh. So. Victor, did you have any thoughts or comments?
I'm generally good with the direction. I'll echo Ted's earlier comment on clarity around just minimal or, or no light trespass and just providing some more detail on that would be great.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll add my view, I think Allison, this is I think a really good solid start. Um, I, Carolyn, I think laid out very well. Sort of the two primary issues, right, which are direction of light and brightness or quantity of light. Um, and I think this does a good job of addressing both of those things. And clearly there's a few questions I, that we could explore a little bit more around refining those, but I do generally think this is the right direction. Uh, do you have any other questions for us, Allison, that you would like additional clarity on related to lighting and?
I think we've got good direction here on how to address this spotlighting issue, or however we want to call them flood lighting or security lighting. I think I've got enough to run with on that. Are there any other related issues that anyone would like to add on? Or are we good with this pretty narrow focus?
I see Carolyn stand up, Carolyn.
Yeah. Let's see here. Okay. So one question and a comment. So how would you describe the difference between what Sammamish is doing and this International Dark Sky Association model like lighting ordinance example?
Well, I think the, the model lighting ordinance, I only included a little excerpt out of it, but it was intended to cover all kinds of exterior lighting. Whereas this mammoth one is strictly focused on this one type of lighting. And so that model ordinance had limits on like the number of fixtures that you could have, you know, at your door in your yard and things like that. Um, and, and all of those had specific provisions about direction of light and shielding and those kinds of things. So I think some mammoth kind of grabbed on to the one piece that related to this, the flood lighting or spotlighting. Um, and, and pulled some of those provisions into their code.
Okay, um, thank you. So that now understanding that a little bit better. My concern, which I expressed in a little bit halting terms when I was first introducing here was direction and brightness, but also quantity. So my way of thinking, since we don't have any lighting regulations in the residential area, I think rather than just put a piece of it in there. If there's a really good example to borrow from to address it a little bit more broadly. So for example, what I'm getting at is some of the new construction down the street from, from me. They don't just have one porch light or two porch lights, or you know, like a porch light and a sideways walk. They've got like five extremely bright unshielded lights on, you know, throughout the, the front of the house and in the yard. So I like this IDA one better because it talks about quantity of light. But it provides some really reasonable exceptions. You know? So I, I would suggest we look a little bit more broadly than just what Sammamish has done.
Okay, I know some mammoth did not have any other exterior lighting provisions that applied to single family areas, but I'm happy to look at other cities in the area and see if we can find a couple of those examples.
That would be great. The one exception that is listed here in the IDA that makes me nervous. I was kind of, and I want to ask you if I'm understanding it correctly. It says here that all outdoor luminaires shall be fully shielded and not exceed the lumen output according to the table. An exception includes a lighting install with a vacancy sensor where the sensor extinguishes the lights no more than fifteen minutes after the area vacated. Does that mean absolutely no lumen or direction regulation on a light that turns off and shuts off within fifteen minutes?
I, I, I think that's what it means.
That's pretty scary. Because some of the worst ones, you know, you walk down the street. They shine right in your face. They turn on while you're walking by. And then they go off a little while after you've walked by. That doesn't solve anything if you don't. We can't regulate those, you know? I mean, I like what Sammamish has where they say that you would never trigger a light coming on if you're not standing on that property.
Yeah, I liked that too. And it definitely gets right at that issue you're talking about where you walk by on the street and suddenly you're blinded by the light flashing in your face.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Allison, it doesn't sound like you have any other questions then for the group?
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay. Any last comments from the panel? Okay. Hearing none, uh, I think we have enough for this to come back to us at whatever the next, I'm not sure if it's the December meeting, we're going to get back to this or, or January, but that does bring us to item number three on the agenda, which would be other business, which would be the deputy director's report and we can talk about our future meetings.
Great. Yeah, we are planning to bring this back in the new year and I wanted to talk a little bit about the schedule. We have one more meeting this year in the fifteenth of December. And I'm planning to bring the final docketed item for this year for an initial discussion similar to what we had tonight. Um, that one's on permit types and noticing. I didn't, did not plan to do the next step on this one, the public hearing in December. It just seemed like difficult timing for if there was anyone in the public that wanted to attend the meeting and participate. So going to hold that for January. And then we want to talk a little bit about the meeting schedule for the new year. I am requesting that we change the meeting timing or, or rotation for when when this, the meeting for this commission is scheduled. It's currently first and third Wednesdays, which hits always right the day after the city council meeting. And so as staff were typically attending two evening meetings back to back that sometimes run, you know, upwards of three or five hours. And so it's just difficult. it's just difficult and preparing for them is difficult. And the packet deadlines also hit at the same time. And so it's it's just always kind of jamming us up in terms of preparing and attending these meetings back to back. Um, so we'd like to shift to either a second or fourth week meeting, I think. We'd also like to move or make permanent what we've been doing mostly this year of meeting once a month uh, as our our typical general schedule. I know that with the comprehensive plan coming up uh, next year, we may need to meet twice a month sometimes, but I think what we'd like to do is make once a month be the standard and then add um, special meetings if needed. When we if we do need to meet twice a month, so we might have sort of a tentative day that we could do that or something like that. Um, Andrea is currently working to schedule out all the boards and commissions. Um, one thing we're realizing is that at some point, probably next year, we're gonna be moving to hybrid meetings, meaning that some people will be online and some people may be in person in city hall. And we'll need to hold all of our board and commission meetings in council chambers at city hall uh, to utilize the technology that we need for hybrid meetings. Um, prior to COVID, some of our boards and commissions met in other locations such as the community center. And so we were able to have more than one meeting at the same time. And with this hybrid approach, we're going to have to get everything scheduled so that there's no overlap between board and commission meetings, which is likely to prove a little difficult. Right now, we know there's a few that have overlap and with our proposed reschedule, it further complicates it. So um, we're looking at the schedule and I I think potentially the fourth fourth week of the month might be where we land, like on a Tuesday or Wednesday, the fourth week, but um, we need to do a little bit more coordination with other parts of the city. Um, we've related to all the different boarding commission schedules before we can give you a definitive date. I just wanted to put it out there today that we're looking at changing this and i- if you all have any initial feedback on, like, I could never do it on Tuesdays or things like that, um, I'd be glad to hear that now. Um, and then we'll plan to bring this back at our December fifteenth meeting for a more specific discussion of which dates we might move to. Does anyone have any initial thoughts on that right now?
I'll I'll break the ice and say Monday night is bowling night, and so I can't meet on Mondays.
I think we'd be looking at either a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, um, most likely a Tuesday or Wednesday.
Not bowling night, so I'm good. Carolyn?
Well, I was going to say any Wednesday is the same to me. Uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays, you know, it's okay. I I probably prefer Wednesdays, but they're all the same.
Ted?
Uh, so it's the extent that um, my my vote counts because I I probably won't be here for much of that um, uh, affected the change. Um, I I I I know that scheduling anything recurring on the fourth week of uh, the month is going to run into November and December, uh, where there's Thanksgiving on the fourth Thursday uh, and Christmas, which uh, usually uh, lands in the fourth week uh, of December. Um, so I I am not saying that it can't be done, uh, it can't be uh, navigated around, but it'll some it'll be recurring navigating around.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yep.
Yeah.
We tend to have to navigate around those anyway, so.
It's true that we typically do some rescheduling in November and December almost all the time anyway, so.
Yeah. Tiffin, Mike, Victor, any initial thoughts?
No, I'm flexible.
I I'm also flexible. I I would prefer Tuesdays than Wednesdays to Thursdays. I'm also a little bit shocked to hear that Ted probably won't be here, and I'm just wondering. It, do you want, you want to talk more about that or?
I thought that was decided.
That's what I thought too, but he
Fourth of November when
Got to wait for it to get certified.
By the election, yes. Uh, so a a a bag of a thousand votes might be found somewhere that happened to have less than uh, uh, November second uh, dates on them and they're all for my opponent and suddenly it all flips, but uh, highly likely this way.
Um, Dan, yeah, I was gonna say, I'll just try to make whatever work. I mean, the the main thing is just try not to schedule during school vacations. It's like, that's really difficult.
I try to look at all of those kinds of calendars of school breaks and other, you know, the major holidays and we try to work around everything we can identify in advance, so definitely do that.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. Sounds like there's some flexibility here, Allison. Uh, I I think uh, I'll speak for myself, but I'm guessing others are in the same boat, which is there's flexibility, but the more we can just have a set schedule for the year, it's easier for, you know, I have no idea what my schedule is gonna be like. Uh, n- next week, let alone next month, but if it's on the calendar, I just plan everything else around it, so. Um, I uh, barring bowling night, I don't have any other standing appointments that I can't reschedule, so.
All right, great. Well, once the conversations happen internally with other departments and we get zeroed in on, you know, which date or which day we're looking at, I'll I'll give you all a heads up via email and then we'll plan to um, bring a potential amendment to the bylaws back at our next meeting.
Great. Okay, uh, anything else, Allison? Do we have, I don't know if you were on the call uh, or Jeff was um, on the the council, but they just had a first reading last night, correct? So they haven't taken any final action if if I recall.
That's correct.
Center proposal?
That's right, and it sounded like, um, well, they tabled the recommendation from the commission pretty quickly in their conversation. They have taken some elements of it. They revised their existing proposal slightly to include a no net loss. So it basically said you have to do the FAR or the no net loss of the existing retail, whichever is greater. And um, they also peeled out a couple of the uh, recommendations related to like the dimensions of retail spaces and said, we'd like to hear more from the planning commission about like revised recommendations around the space parameters for retail. Um, so I think that it's likely they're gonna send some of it back to us to look at next year for a further code amendment. And they are moving forward with a FAR based um, amendment right now with a couple revisions.
Okay, and uh, uh, but we can help. They'll have voted on that by our December fifteenth meeting.
Yeah, their meeting is December seventh when they're planning to vote on this.
Cool. Tiffin?
Yeah, just a clarification. So are they, they kind of, they're gonna adopt something, but then maybe look to do something in addition in the future? Is that what you're saying?
That's what it sounded like. Um, and we'll see what the final decision is um, on the seventh, but it definitely sounded like they were peeling out a chunk of things that they wanted further recommendations from the commission on.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Um, and I just want to say thanks to Ted. I last minute um, had something on my calendar that wasn't on my calendar, but it was a commitment, a family commitment. So Ted stepped in and in representing the commission last night at the city council meeting. So thank you, Ted, for stepping in uh, last minute and and doing that.
Vice chair is for.
I, well, I always like giving people a a more of a heads up than uh, three or four hours, so my my thank you uh, for doing that. Uh, okay, so December fifteenth is the next meeting. Do we have any known um, absences? Or sorry, uh, before I do that, Allison, is that all you had?
Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
Great. Uh, December fifteenth, anybody know if they're gonna be out or not at this point? All right, hearing none. Uh, does anybody have any announcements or communication that they wanted to share with the group? It's usually like where we have like board reports and stuff like that, but we don't really have any subcommittees or boards, so it's uh, uh, usually not a lot. All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that uh, I think that uh, Ted did a great job representing the uh, planning commission uh, for the council last night and uh, I think he did quite well.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ted.
Carolyn, did you also have a comment?
Yeah, I I said sometime, Allison, if you get a chance, it would be great to hear um, what it was that the council did not like about our sign code recommendations. Be really interested in how that played out, you know?
Oh, I'd be happy to tell you that right now. Um, so I think in short, there was a feeling that like for doing more more than just the read compliance. They're very interested in doing that, but they wanted to have more outreach to the business community in particular um, before making changes. They kind of latched on to some of the recommendations about A-frame signs and were worried that by some of the changes we made, it would lead to a proliferation of tons of A-frame signs everywhere. Um, I'm not quite sure why that was the thing that caught their attention, but that was something they talked about for a while. Um, I think in general, though, they were looking to do potentially even more in terms of a update to the sign regulations, but they also wanted to get more public involvement and input before making bigger changes. And so there seemed like there was a lot of interest in a phase two sign code update, and they agreed they'd talk about that more in the beginning of twenty twenty-two and figure out where it might fit in the work plan. So that's another one that may come back to the commission at some point. I I don't know, you know, once they see everything that gets docketed this year and with the, you know, comprehensive plan amendment and other things that are already on the work plan. I don't know if the sign code will rise to the top for next year or not, but um, it's definitely something they seemed pretty interested in when they talked about it back in October, I guess it was.
Great, thanks for the summary.
Yeah.
I have totally forgotten that we had done that work, Carolyn, so. It feels like it was so long ago.
Yeah, it would be so much easier if I asked Allison when than whether I tried to go find it in the the video.
Yeah, no, that was
Yeah, I mean, I think the short story was they didn't find anything particularly bad or terrible about the recommendations from the commission. I think if anything, they wanted to go a little further and just wanted to take more time to do that.
Right.
Yeah, having been, I'll I'll lend my perspective, Carolyn, having been in the meeting and and quizzed by them on a few things. It did sound like a number of people felt like, um, uh, uh, I I'll just give you my impression, so I don't want to speak on their behalf, but my impression was that there were a number of people that maybe didn't feel like it it restricted enough, like there's a desire to actually have, you know, uh, less signage and and less clutter and and that maybe we hadn't gone far enough, even though uh, you know, I think that there were a few places and ways that we had uh, I think tried to be more uh, discerning about what was gonna be allowed, so um, it'll be interesting to see what they send back to us eventually.
All right, thanks.
All right, uh, if I don't see any other uh, hands, thank you all for your time this evening and the great discussion. We will see you on December the fifteenth. And uh, with no other business to come before the planning commission, the time is now seven forty-four PM. The meeting is adjourned, and if you could please remain on the line until Andrea ends the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.